Gotcha.
Did it go? We good? Okay. Alright, good evening, everybody. So Ricky still on? Well, welcome to our work session for the March 30th. I was gonna say the last day in March, but tomorrow would be that. We're gonna go over the meeting, the agenda for the meeting. Actually, it'll be two weeks from tonight because of the break next week, spring break. Hope everybody stays safe and healthy. For the meeting in two weeks, Ms. Stevens, you'll be doing the invocation and the pledge. We'll approve the minutes, we'll approve the agenda, review committee reports, no clean schools, really no committees. Any superintendent recognition that, well, we don't have any lined up for then, but I do have two right now. So while you're pulling up the video, I would like to go ahead and, before you start it there, as you all see, you've got some gifts on the table. It's Board Appreciation Week, Month. We're just celebrating the whole month. The way the schedule's been, but just a time for us to tell you all how much we appreciate you and for the schools to tell you that. And everything that you all do, a lot of it's behind the scenes and it's not seen sometimes by the general public and by others, but you all are a fantastic board. As I've said before, I have peers in other districts that tell me stories that kind of make me twitch a little bit, and I don't have any of those to share, so that's always been a good thing. But you are a board that I can honestly say keeps kids at the forefront, no matter what you're doing. And teachers also. That is not always easy to do when you're in the political realm. So kudos to you all for that. And I hope you'll enjoy the goodies there. And again, just thank you for what you do and your service to the community and to the school system. It's a big job, and I don't think people realize how big it is till they get into it and start moving through it. So thank y'all so much for that.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Let's give them a round of applause.
And to follow that up, we have a vaccine video from our last big event. And we're gearing up for the second round. I'd enjoy seeing that.
Do we have sound somewhere?
They're working on it.
No, we do, because I heard it. I would like to point out, too, that a good bit of this was put together by one of our student interns. We are very proud to have our students learning and working with our professionals. Students also. Well, they changed that over to sound our intern's name. She's been interning with our communications department. She's a senior at Appalachian High School, and her name is Mia Valles.
Mia.
Mia Valles. While we're pulling this up, too, I'd just like to say, I know we talked about it on Friday. I think everybody was there except for Stephanie, but that was an extremely well-run and well-organized. Kudos to the people that planned that.
The folks in charge of that. Somebody said it was better run, they thought it was better run than Chick-fil-A drive-through.
I checked in about that. I apologize for my absence. I had a doctor's appointment in Atlanta that I couldn't miss, but I did check in with some people and it was amazing, the feedback. So y'all did a great job.
Good feedback from Friday, I'm sure it was. And just to note, Lisa Malouf is off tonight. She has a family commitment, so she's not ill or anything.
That's fine.
Alright, well, while he's trying to get to the sound on that, how about we go ahead and move through, and he can tap me and let me know.
As a point of order, can we check, can we correct one thing that I saw on the minutes for the work session when we talked about the increase on the local supplement? I had requested that we put the total amount that that was, that the system was paying for that on there, and I didn't see it on there. We can correct that to one and a half, to show that we still want to add any of all contributions to the system. I just think if we're gonna do it with other things, we need to make sure that we have the dollar. Thank you.
Do you want to move on to the department reports?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and we've got Mr. Rogers here. Let him go ahead. Introduce, if you all haven't met Guy, Guy Rogers with the Barrow County Tax Assessment Office. You know, every year, his predecessor, and now he comes and just gives us a quick overview of how things are going and where we are. Glad to have him with us tonight.
Thank you. Get my notes out. Kind of big. Alright, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, for allowing me to come and present this little update. Won't be long. We are in exciting times in Barrow County, as you already know. And we see that we have challenging times ahead as we handle the growth that we see, you know, in our county. And as we handle and prepare for the growth that is coming. Now, I will tell you, this is just the top E. This is just the first layer that we see. It's coming and it's gonna come quickly. I'm talking about the growth, the housing, the industry, the commercial, all the growth. It is just the top layer. So I worked in Gwinnett County for over 24 years. And I was there during the 90s and the 2000s, early 2000s, where it really hit Gwinnett County. And I remember adding 10,000 houses a year at one time in the 90s in Gwinnett. So not to scare anyone if that scares you, but it is something that we have to prepare for and that we will have to handle. And it'll be a challenge, be a challenge for our office. And it'll be a challenge for Barrow County in general and, of course, the schools. The more people, the more houses that are built, the more apartments, the more townhomes, whatever may be, it's gonna be a challenge because the more houses that are built, the more children are coming. So we've just gotta prepare and be ahead. But let me just go over some things commercially, industrial, industrially, residentially, and just give you some updates regarding, I'm gonna take that off for a second. I can't talk with that thing on too much. Well, commercially, we see new businesses being established and built throughout the county with the new overpasses that are being built on 5311 and, of course, the one that was just built on 81. The whole 316 corridor is gonna be commercial. They're gonna have access roads on both sides, and that whole strip is gonna be nothing but commercial and probably pretty quickly, as soon as they get the bypasses, the overpasses built. It's imminent, and, you know, there's already several businesses going in on Exchange Parkway and over that way, new businesses. They have the Panda, they have the Body Flex, and others that have just come in this past year. So commercially, expect, expect some growth, a lot of growth there, especially on 316 corridor. Industrial, the Development Authority, and of course, Lisa is the Director of the Barrow County Development Authority. She's doing a tremendous job in bringing more attention and business and industry to Barrow County. And that's important because the more industry and businesses we have, that takes some of the pressure off of the residential taxpayers that usually bears the burden. So the more industry, the more commercial businesses and developments we have, that's a good thing as far as the digest and as far as the pressure on, you know, the residential taxpayers. So she's doing a tremendous job in bringing that, not just bringing businesses, but drawing attention to Barrow County throughout the state. So she's doing a terrific job. Of course, Park 53 has a new tenant, a new resident there, and that is the Spring Mountain Center, and that's a $45 million investment there. And it's gonna create, I believe, 200 jobs. And so that's a great thing, and once that is built and going, it's gonna bring more. It's gonna bring more to Park 53 and, of course, the whole county. Thirdly, residential, we all know what the market is doing. The market is basically going up, 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 and the market and values are increasing. Question is, what is fueling the market? What is making this happen? Well, there's a couple of three things. One is low interest rates. We all know they're at an all-time low in some cases. Low interest rates, number two, a lack of inventory. Lack of inventory. Typically, we should have a six-to-nine-month inventory of residential houses. Right now, we're at a month and a half. As soon as someone puts their house up for sale, it is, it is, it is almost instantly sold. That's how much, how lack of, how much of a lack of supply we have residentially. I was reading an article today, and they said that, and this isn't just Barrow County, this isn't just state of Georgia or the South, this is nationwide. They said San Diego and Seattle area have some of the, have some of the most-wanted real estate in the nation. They were talking about one person put their house up for sale, and within a half-hour, have 88 offers. So it is, and I've seen it myself here in Barrow County. So it is a lack of inventory. Number three, Barrow County is in a great location. It's in a great location, 316 splits the county, and of course, that leaves Barrow County in between Atlanta and Athens. Athens being the education center, Atlanta being, of course, transportation and everything else center. And we're experiencing also the overflow and the growth from Gwinnett County coming into Barrow. So we're in a very great location, very good location on 316, and are bordering counties, and we are getting growth from those areas. Now, some residential data I want to share with you. From January of 2018 to January of 2021, the price per square foot of houses sold within that timeframe increased from $75 per square foot to $100 per square foot. And that is just not new houses, that's everything that is sold. That's everything that's existing houses, that's new houses, that's everything. And there's a formula behind that that is used, but that is, that's eye-opening. In three years, going up $25 per square foot. Number two, we have added, our office has added 568 new houses in 2020 with the 2020-year build for the 2021 digest. In 2022, we have several developments that will add hundreds of houses. And me and Jennifer was talking about that before the meeting, that there are several developments with, I think you gave me a number of how many thousand?
Four to five thousand apartments.
Forty-five hundred.
Yeah, four to five, so yeah, forty-five hundred.
There you go, forty-five thousand houses and development, townhomes. And townhomes of Auburn, they gonna have 400 right there alone, townhomes. And those townhomes run from anywhere from $250,000 up to $400,000 for a townhome. So that's just one development. There's developments up in Brazelton that are getting ready to get kicked off. So it is here, and it's coming, and it's coming fast. So the developments. Also, we have added over 1,200 homestead exemptions this year. 1,200, that's a lot. Now, I do account that I have advertised that on our Q Public site, I've advertised that on Facebook, on Accountants Facebook, I've advertised it even on the radio station. Do y'all know we have a radio station?
Oh, yeah.
We do have a radio station. And I advertised it on there. And also, Jessica Garrett, the Tax Commissioner, has done something that hasn't been done in years that was supposed to be done, but anyone that has a new, has bought or exchanged houses either by purchase or what a gift or whatever, we're supposed to send them a brochure telling them about how to apply for homestead exemption, what types of homestead exemption is offered and so forth. And we began doing that earlier last year, about midway last year, and so I believe that has accounted for a lot of the homestead exemptions, too. The 2021 digest total value has increased, and I guess this is what y'all have been waiting for, approximately 4%. You can count on that as far as the increase from last year to this year, about 4%. And you wonder how much is that? Well, that adds up to approximately $117,108,255. That's the 40% number. Okay, that's not the 100% number, that's the 40% number. It's number one.
That's the 4%.
That's the 40%, yeah.
The 4%?
No. Okay, that's the increase, but that is the 40% number, the assessment number. But that is the 4% of the increase. Well, I'm giving you all the 40% numbers, all you gotta do is multiply that by your millage rate, and that gives you, you know, that gives you what the revenue would be. According to that number and the millage rate that we stand, we're talking over $2 billion according to the millage rate and the increase. So also, as far as the digest is concerned, we will be closing the 2021 digest April 23rd. We will be sending notices, if everything goes correctly or as planned, we'll be sending notices May 7th with the last day to appeal on June 21st. I will be sending our digest numbers over to Rose, which is our financial director, and to Jessica Garrett, our Tax Commissioner, probably May 1st, somewhere along that first week of May. Also, while I'm at, while I'm here, I'd like to make a plug on some new things that we are offering. A lot of it's online. We've been awarded from the ACCG money for an intern for this summer. And so what we're gonna do is use that intern to update our website, to make it more user-friendly, to make it more, you know, adaptable and transparent and be able to offer some things that people can apply for, homestead exemption, business personal property, they can submit it over online, the homestead applications online. A lot of good information will be on that website. And also, starting this year, and this will be on our Q Public site, that a person can appeal their property valuation as of May 7th, when I send the notices online and submit them online. So that will, they have to go through the process and go through, like comps, the comp searches and stuff like that, but they'll be able to see exactly what the comps are in their neighborhood regarding their valuation and be able to submit their appeal online through the Q Public site. So a lot of good tools, excited about what future brings, and hopefully it's been a help to you. Any questions? Questions?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
You've obviously been doing this for a while. So you held the same position in Gwinnett?
In Gwinnett, I was not, I was not chief appraiser in Gwinnett. I've been chief appraiser in Morgan County twice, and Banks County, and in Barrow County.
So you've obviously had a little experience doing assessing.
Yes, I have.
So we're still looking at reassessments on property every three years, is that right?
Yes, and I was gonna mention that, I forgot to mention that. We have reassessed this year, I don't know how I got over this, but this is one of my points I forgot to mention, thanks reminding me. We have updated over 16,200 parcels for the 2021 digest. So 16,200 parcels. We have somewhere in the neighborhood of 34,000 parcels, so approximately almost half we have reviewed, and we've also done some land adjustments. We've done some neighborhood adjustments along with that. And so we're trying to keep up with the market as best we can, but my plan is to continue to do the reassessments and, you know, on a yearly basis.
I've got a neighbor who sent out a real discouraging email about the neighborhood adjustments. Were there any neighborhoods that were hit with excessive amounts?
Thanks. Well, we-
In excess of 25%?
I don't think so.
I don't look it up.
No, not 25%. If something's been adjusted, most of the time, we're talking, you know, on average, 10% to 15%. But when you get up above, when you get up above 20, 25, 30%, I mean, you're really talking about some major adjustments that throughout the years have just been neglected.
It sounded unreasonable.
Yeah, something that is going up now, I don't know if he was talking about his taxes or his value. I mean, as far as taxes is concerned, a 30% on taxes, that's tremendous. And plus, it has to do with millage rates, and, you know, I have no dealing with that. So I have no idea where he would got that number at, you know, anyway. So no, not to my knowledge, thank you.
My next question is-
Yes, ma'am.
-of the 2021 digest that increased by 4% over the last four years. You talked about that in 117-
That was from last year.
Yeah. Right, and that's just for one year, which means about a 2 billion dollar increase. When you did the reassessments for, I guess, 1920, maybe, did, do you know how much the average increase was on those assessments and how much that translates to in dollars for existing properties that were reassessed?
From 1920?
2020, I'm sorry. I'm only-
From 2000 to now?
Yeah.
And how much the increase in taxes will be? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
No. I do not, I did not do any numbers with this data.
That's fine. I'm trying to figure out how many buses we can buy here while we're talking. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
I appreciate all you're doing, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Got the video?
Alright. We got video with sound.
Just kidding.
Just kidding.
So they asked us if we had some sessions we could set up to do the daily gathering portion of the vaccinations. So we set up 20 laptops for the meeting service room. We set up a dedicated network for the users in the room. This lets them do it in real time, otherwise they have to staff up a big one to bring it back to the health department, and then someone has to go through it again.
Awesome. Really, really, just a special day for the whole system, I think, for the whole community. So a lot of community partners there that were supporting us while we were working through that. And again, just the planning was just outstanding, and it just went as smooth as it definitely, you know, could. We, and it, I've had several people, several staff members reach out and say that it was one of the best days they'd ever had working in the Barrow County school system, being a part of that, so it was. And we get to do it all again Thursday, too. So it was, and we get to do it all again Thursday too. So that would be great.
Thoughtfulness in making sure that everybody had, we did it at such time that the teachers had several days to prepare. And did I hear correctly, somewhere we did over eleven hundred staff vaccinations, which was more than the county had been able to do for everybody in the county in a week? Or a month?
Up to that point, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good job. And great video, too.
Yeah. Intern did a great job working with Michael and got a project in the Boys and Girls Club coming up. There you go. We'll get her some work.
Yep. All righty, Dr. Green? Thank you. Any questions about that? Not Dr. Thompson? Okay. Ms. Houston?
All right, tonight we will, let's go over the, yeah, the invoices first. So these were the invoices between ten and twenty-five thousand dollars as of March 24th. The first one was to Tech Optics. It was paid out of SLOF funds, twelve thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-two cents. It was for the Bassa Band Chorus and Dance Sound Systems. That was three different sound systems, and it was over at Bassa. Tech Optics, again, paid out of SLOF funds, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty for sixty phone systems, and that's just our stock for district-wide. I'm also going to update you on the two thousand, two hundred thousand, it's on the same one. I'm sorry Suzanne, just scroll up with the, yeah. The two hundred thousand dollar technology purchase authorization. We were, we have bought three hundred and forty-nine Chromebooks. And that was a hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. So we have thirty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars left if it's needed. The next thing is our budget process. We are well into our budget process. We start back in January. But the first part is the education of the budget process. So we, we present our timeline to the SGTs. We also develop a budget video. It's called the 2021 Budget Recap Video that me and Dr. McMichael do together. That has been submitted to our SGTs and faculty, so they get to watch a very exciting video about the budget. And then we have been working on the budget since January. So we open up this budget work file, and we get our department heads and our, to enter their budgets into that work file. Then we do the salary and benefit projections back in January. Then we have our preference sheets that are due back from our employees. And so we know which employees are coming back and which ones we need to replace. Then we have, our allotments are given to the schools. So then we'll tell the schools who they need, how many teachers they get, or how many they may be losing. And then we have our job fair. So now we're in March here, and so the Board of County Tax Assessor's Office comes and gives the annual review, and we're going to put that into the budget from the information he gave us tonight. Then hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll get our QBE projection from the state. So that will give us our revenue. And then we start working at our expenses. We have them all right now, and so then we have to whittle away a lot of them. And then we come to April 21st, and that will be our, our meeting with me and the board, our financial presentation of the budget. Then April 27th, we'll present it to you again at the work session, and y'all will vote on a tentative general fund balance. I'll have to advertise that in the newspaper. And also hold two public hearings for the public to come and make any sort of, just voice their opinion on it. And then I'll give you the other funds budget. So we also have SLOF funds, and we have federal programs, and school food nutrition funds. So I'll present that to you on May 25th. Then you'll, you'll tentatively approve that. I'll hold my two public hearings, and then we'll meet back here on June 22nd to do the final, but approve the final budget before June 30th. And between there, we'll have the millage rate. Once we get the final numbers from the tax assessor, I'll come back to you and give you different millage rates and what that, how much revenue that will return to us. And we can make just some decisions on what we want to do with the military. And if we do not roll it back, we'll have, we'll have to have public hearings on that and advertise it in the paper also. But it was really good news to hear that he was going to give the tax digest to the, to Rose and the Tax Commissioner on May 1st. It's going to be, that, that's really going to give us a lot of time to make good decisions and advertise and do our public hearings if needed. We're usually at a crunch time there, and I'm making y'all come in in extra days. And it, hopefully, it will be a much smoother process. All right? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pearl?
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. Now, we have two items tonight in our report. This first one is, we want to bring, bring to you, well, okay, our Westside Edition. I'm just giving you an update on that and status, and we're still plugging right along. Well underway, nearly complete with drywall. As you can see from, from the pictures there, ceiling grid in place, lights, marker boards, tack boards. They've, they've started on the, there's the field house out front for the ball field. There's a look inside. And they've already started flooring some of the restroom area. So they continue to move, move along at a good pace there. We're on track to get in there this summer. Probably first part of June, be ready to get the floors waxed and get furniture moved in and that kind of thing. All right. Our next item is our master plan at the Austin Road Campus. And we're looking to put in place an early release rating package just to give ourselves an opportunity to get ahead of future development out there at the school, at the campus. We do not get reimbursed to move earth from the state. So that's one reason why we just feel like it'd be better to go ahead and get started on this. We know that we anticipate, anyway, building an elementary school, a middle school, another phase of Bass out there eventually. And so what we want to do is just get all that earth moved, get ourselves in position to begin construction on whichever of those may happen to come first. And so it's only going to get more expensive for this work to be done as time moves on. So we want to go ahead and get started with it for that reason as well. And we want to get as much done this summer as we can while the kids are not around. So it'll give us an opportunity to do that as well. And also, there's a good bit of fill associated with this earthwork. And so the longer that that has to sit and compact, the better off we'll be before foundation work begins. So there's just a number of opportunities that really point us in this direction. And we anticipate bringing to you a guaranteed maximum price at the end of May for you all to, to consider. So we're working towards that and excited about getting any more work done out there. Any questions?
So you're in deep loss on moving your dirt in my way?
Yes. Yes. So in effect, I mean, most of the time we do the grading piece along with the construction package. We're just separating those two pieces out. Let us get out in front. Oh gee, it's not, no, it's not.
I haven't seen that, though, because as we talked about, sooner rather than later, especially over at Bassa with the, I mean, the huge expense that it's been. Thank goodness, we're going to have to have athletic facilities over there.
Well, and like Mr. Roger was, you know, saying, it's-
Calling in a new room.
It's coming quicker. And like Phil said, we'd much rather do it with today's dollars than two years from now dollars. We're seeing building supplies go up weekly.
We have such a phenomenal relationship with Barrow Parks and Rec, which I'm super thankful for, and Dan McGee is amazing. And of course, our SLOF project really helped us bridge, you know, a really good relationship between, but again, the growth is so much. There's just so many children. You know, there's just not enough field space to go around at this point. But I think, I think we've handled it beautifully up until this point. But it's really, you know, it's becoming restricted.
Amazing how quickly it happens.
Isn't it amazing how fast it happens?
Anything else? Thanks, Joe. Dr. Moulton?
Great job on Friday, by the way, putting that program together.
Thank you, certainly eighteen minutes. Thank you. We recently brought before the board information about dual enrollment and the opportunities for Barrow County students. So this evening, I asked Dr. Sutson to give us additional information on specific opportunity at Sims, and he's also wanted to talk about Sims 2.0 regarding enrollment.
So glad to take this thing off. It's the first time today.
A pleasure to be here.
Very excited to share with you some information from Sims Academy. We are currently in our seventh year of operation at Sims. And so we have spent some time with our Board of Directors just reflecting on the past seven years and doing some strategic planning on what the next seven years will look like. And so I'm very excited to share with you the direction that we are looking at heading. Y'all are going to change for me? So while they're pulling up this second slide, I just wanted to fill you in on what Sims looks like at the current time. We have students coming from Bassa, which is not very much of a commute for them. But they're also coming from Appalachia and Mindarbaro High School. They do attend Sims two blocks back to back. And obviously, that's a need due to transportation. We can't transport them back and forth every period. Those students are able to participate in career and technical student organizations through Sims. They have a choice if they would like to participate through Sims or through the school that they, the full-time school that they attend. And many of our students also participate in the work-based learning program for their home high schools as well. All pathway courses at Sims are taught by Barrow County School System faculty at this point, and they are for high school credit. And so on that slide, you will see a list of the current pathways that we are, we are offering. We did evaluate our current model in collaboration with our board, but also the Board of Directors, but also our partners in Lanier Technical College especially. And we found some limitations that have kind of peeled back on some of the quality growth that we want to focus on. You'll see several bullets there, one of which, and I hate that Lisa's not here tonight because she can speak to this, the need to be nimble and quickly respond to workforce needs. We attend almost every site visit with industry that's looking at our community to locate. And we want to go in there and tell them, yes, we can respond to that need, whether you need one hundred and seventy employees or graduates, or you need fifteen. And so with our current model, you know, we do have to attract a large number of students in order to fund a teacher. Many of our students also, in our assessment of what's going on, we've found come to Sims to take elective courses. And we think that that's really important. You know, students need to try new things in order to see what their thing is going to be. We would prefer to back that up a little bit so that they're having those experiences early, earlier, and if they're getting transportation across the county and they're coming to Sims, you know, rather, you know, our primary focus there being on preparing them for their college and career, rather than exposing them to all sorts of different areas. Again, that is a need, but we want to back it up. In many cases, students also take Sims courses, and then they just have to retake the same course at Lanier Technical College, the college equivalent. So a perfect example of that is culinary arts. The standards, the high school standards and the college standards are very similar. And so many times, it's just put on repeat when they do go to college. And of course, this model was developed when we were trying to centralize some of those really expensive labs, such as culinary arts and construction, and not necessarily building out its labs at both places. But now we do have a full-time high school right next door. So if students want to engage in those programs, they certainly have the opportunity and can do so. You could just flip to that next slide for me. This is just, I encourage you to read this on your own, but this, we were inclusive in this process. So all the way back in October, we met with Lanier Technical College. We had Dr. McMichael and other BCSS staff members. We had Foot Hill staff members there. Foot Hill's actually is located, the Barrow side, at Sims Academy in the evening, and that's intentional. Those students need a plan and certainly need college and career preparation. And we also got feedback from students into this process as well. So I do encourage you, again, to look at some of their feedback. And I also wanted to, if you could flip to that next slide, to publicly thank our Board of Directors. So you can see, we've spent a lot of time revamping the Board of Directors. You see under the industry heading there, we have tried to reach every major industry in our region to make sure that we're getting a wide variety of perspectives. I have to tell Joe Vode a special thank you. He's served as the chairman of the Board of Directors since the beginning of Sims and continues being such a help to us in that area. Also, we have several community representatives on the board, including the Director of the Innovation Crescent Partnership, which is focused on building out that 316 area. Carol Coffer, she's the Director of the WorkSource Georgia. We affectionately refer to her as the Money Lady. And so she provides lots of grants and support. And then, of course, many others, but including Lisa Malouf as the Director of Economic Development. And you'll see our education partners are listed there, too. So all of these folks have had a hand in this strategic planning process that we've been engaging in. You could flip to the next slide for me. They have identified several priorities that they would like us to focus on in the next five years. And one of those is to shift to offering dual enrollment credits in partnership with Lanier Technical College. The state of Georgia wants to invest thirty semester hours in every high school student in the state of Georgia, and we want to let them do that. We want to just facilitate that as much as we can so that as many of our students graduate with as many college credits as they can, walking across the stage, not only with a high school diploma, but with college credits in their back pocket. How much more likely are they, if they're able to skip some of those general ed courses in college and go straight to what they want to go to college for? That's what we want to facilitate. We want to add additional supports to these early college type of offerings. It's quite an adjustment to go from a high school course straight into a college course. So we've been working with Lanier Technical College to provide additional tutoring. We recognize that technology is a need because they have to access technology, and specifically, blackboard for dual enrollments. So providing additional support to our dual enrollment students. We want to align our, what we're offering with what industry actually needs. And then back that all the way up to middle school through that collaboration at the district level to ensure that we're exposing students early on to what opportunities are available. And then gradually, along the way, they're building up into completing some dual enrollment courses and thus getting started on their career. And then, most importantly, we want to transition Sims to serve as the premier and agile workforce development resource in our region. We want folks to locate their businesses in this area, specifically because of the workforce development programs that we have. And indeed, I think that we're well on our way to doing that. We've made a lot of progress even through pandemic year. So if you could flip to that next slide, again, I just wanted to highlight our partner in Lanier Technical College. They're just amazing. They have facilitated every need that we've had as far as scheduling. We are proud that they are our partner. I go to the Career Academy CEO meetings across the state, hear some horror stories about collaboration with college partners. And Lanier Tech, anything we need, they have been able to do it. And it's because, like you all, they're focused entirely on the students and making sure that they have the best opportunities available to them. Perhaps one thing that they've done that's been the biggest help for us is they are aligning their classes that we're teaching through these programs to our calendar and bell schedule so that there are no obstacles in terms of scheduling to students being able to participate. And indeed, it is seamless. You could switch to that next slide. These are the programs that our board has provided input on, and these represent the critical industries in our community. They are aligned with those needs, not just now, but also for the- They are aligned with those needs, not just now, but also for the future. So you'll see automotive, CNA, computer networking, criminal justice, culinary, mechatronics, medical admin assistant, and welding. And I have a special welding story for you at the end. So just unpacking that idea of a career cohort. Instead of, you know, finding one student here to do a dual enrollment course and one student here to do a enrollment course, we want to find out what they're good at and what they're passionate about. And then we want to put them in a sustained program of study so they earn a credential. And so in this example, we find those students who have already completed a CTA E pathway at Winderboro High School or Appalachia High School in criminal justice. Now they're ready to take the next step and get college credits. So this is a cohort. Those students will stay together and we will actually, they'll be rubbing elbows with the sheriff's office and also the Winder Police Department. We've already started those partnerships. So they're building relationships with those folks through this cohort so that when they graduate, they get their diploma, but they already know who they want to go work with. And they have the college credentials to make that happen. Jim Fullington, in a representative from the, Captain Aiken from the sheriff's office. They've helped us talk with kids already about this opportunity and about the career opportunities available in law enforcement. We also plan to offer academic courses because we know that many of our students will go to a four-year college after leaving high school. And so how beneficial for them to be able to knock out some of those academic credits before they even leave. One differentiating factor here is that these courses will actually be taught in the Sims Academy building with only high school students in the courses, which is quite a big deal. Additionally, we have secured additional tutors through our partnership with Lanier. So going from eleventh grade American literature to high school English eleven oh one, that's quite a jump. English eleven oh one, you see your professor two days a week for about fifty minutes, right? But through this partnership, we'll be offering that course four days per week. Two days will be with the tutor for those students specifically who are struggling. So providing that additional support and helping them to get there, we know will build their confidence and it'll also build their resume. So some key features of this, all high school students in our county, including those at Foothills who are studying at night, will be able to attend classes, dual enrollment classes through Sims. It will help us to maximize our use of facilities, transportation resources, and student choice. If any time that we can increase the choices to our students and our families, I think we're headed in the right direction. In order to accommodate this model, several programs will transition into still being available for every student in the county, but you just need to stay all day and attend Bassa instead of going back and forth. And so those programs would be culinary arts, hospitality, and graphic design, which are already aligned with the programs that we're offering at Bassa. And then we also have several programs that will transition back to Appalachia or Winderboro. And those are audio video technology and web design. And so the vision is, if you're coming to Sims, you're doing that for college credit, either in academics or career. And those programs are not in competition with the high school CTE programs, but rather they're a complement to, they're the next step for what that student heads down. And then I'm, I'm really trying to keep to my time limit. I'm probably already over, but I do have to share with you this success story. We did a proof of concept this year, and we did that through welding and automotive. These young people started in January in a welding cohort in partnership with Kubota. It is called the Kubota Cohort. And typically, to get into the welding program, there's about five hundred dollars in expense to the student that's not covered by the state. Kubota was actually able to sponsor the majority of that, and we were able to make up the difference from other funding sources. And every one of these students received all of the supplies that they needed in order to participate. They will walk out and they will have two welding certificates from Lanier Tech, and they'll be certified according to the American Welding Society. They have a plan. Kubota has already started interacting with them. And I guarantee, well, as Jason said, I make promises, but no guarantees. Don't take that. But I, I promise you Kubota will hire every one of those if they, if the trend continues and how we've worked with them before. And Mr. Rieger, the welding instructor at Lanier Tech, that's a quote from him. And basically, he's telling you that in all of his years, he has never seen a stronger group of dual enrollment students. And I attribute that to, they have a goal and they have a plan, and they are excited about it. And therefore, they're motivated and they are participating in class. And just one side note, alls we had to do was tell Caterpillar what Kubota was doing, and we've got a Caterpillar cohort for next year. I appreciate your time and certainly can answer any questions.
You talked about the limitations that were identified, and that's getting students to focus on a career versus just a elective. How do you sell that? How do you, how do you talk to the students to understand that? You know, because they're also sick and save a ton of money by taking. What, what's the plan to, to sell that program? Because I agree with you.
That's a, that's a great question, and it's one that we've been facing for quite some time. I think that we've made strides in the most recent years by backing that conversation up. You know, instead of having a parent night and advertising the events and relying on that experience to do that, our eighth grade students take the U-Science Assessment, and that's where they're finding out what the intersection of their passion and their proficiency are. They take it again in the tenth grade, and they're having conversations with their advisors all throughout. And so our vision is, you know, especially as we get this thing going, is to not have it be a surprise. Hey, come be in this welding program, but rather that student was expelled, expelled. We don't want that. Exposed. They were exposed to welding in their middle school agriculture class, and they said, I kind of like that. So they did the Ag Mechanics program at Winderboro, and then that instructor guides them toward the welding program in dual enrollment. So making it that true six through twelve and beyond type of situation.
And I would say another piece of that too, and it's something we've been working on since we started Sims, and it's getting better every year, but we still have some work to do is, as Dale said, backing it up into middle school, even into elementary, which we, we've been doing. But also doing some more training, and we started that a couple of years ago with the staffs at the high school the career programs and those type of things and what, what we're doing there and keeping that communication flowing too. Having them all work together. And as, as Dale's built out, his staff, they've gotten a lot better, I think, communicating out to the high schools too.
I do have one question. Going back to several slides back, you talked about two programs that were going to transition back to the high schools. What was the logic there instead of keeping them in Sam?
Those programs, one is web design and the other is audio video technology. We found over the last few years, audio video technologies specifically can really engrain themselves at the school level by building various athletic events, doing a school news show, provides a lot of authentic experiences and also serves the school. But those specific programs, the, the true reason is, is that Lanier Technical College doesn't offer programs such as those at the Barrow campus. And so made more sense at that point to allow those electives for the students at their home school. As I understand it, minimal facilities, there, there were rooms for that previously. They just need to be repurposed to it.
Okay. I'm, I'm just looking at those two particular type courses and the need for that in the state. So it seemed to me that, you know, we needed to do a really good job at the high schools with that because Sims is perfect for that. Maybe Lanier Tech just needs to offer it.
Certainly. And we are, so let, let me give you another example, construction. Lanier Tech doesn't offer that at the local campus, but they have already submitted the paperwork to offer that at Sims Academy because that is another need. But there's a year and a half or so process that they have to go through to make that happen. But audio video is certainly on our radar for that as well.
Yeah, I want to go back just to and reiterate something Dale said about the partnership with Lanier Tech. That is really a huge deal. I don't think I can underscore that enough. I have also, talking with other superintendents that have charter, that have career academies and, and other staff. That's not the norm, working with colleges and, and the, with the dual enrollment. And the fact that they even flexed as much to, to rearrange their schedule, I don't think I've ever seen that. I mean, colleges and universities and, and technical schools are notorious for saying, here's what we're doing and we're not changing. And, and they can do that, you know, it's not, they have to do any of this. And so that, to me, is just really a testament to the partnership we've built and, and started years ago with Lisa. And then it's just come, come on and on since then. And it's, I don't think you'll see that anywhere else, that, that going to that level of, of accommodation for both sides. Usually it's, usually it's the school system that has to do all the accommodating, more or less. So that partnership is really a model. And it, it's always been strong, and Dale and his staff have really strengthened it here lately too. So that, I just want to reiterate that piece. That, that's a real point of pride for us.
Dale, when you, with your based learning as far as the eighteen-year-old age limit or industry, have y'all gotten a little bit more flexible with that, or do you still have problems with the VA experience with those industries?
It, it's an, it's an education issue. Many folks just kind of already have that in their mind that they can't accept a student under eighteen due to workers comp or whatever the case may be. But recently, I attended a, a plant manager's meeting. There were five plant managers there from Sawbys, Stefan, and several others. And so that was actually a point on the agenda, was to provide them with some information that they could then share with their HR department to start opening that up. And one thing that we discussed is even if you can't open that up on the manufacturing floor, I mean, at Sawbys, you can't be around the chemicals, but you could work in the front office or do some sort of auxiliary task so that you're still getting exposure to that industry and that company without doing the core of the work. So we're continuing to work on that. And two work-based learning coordinators are just, you know, they're phenomenal in their effort as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Beggs, anything? Okay. Old business, the GSBA legislative, legislative positions, I don't think we had any.
I had nothing submitted. Final call on that, but if not, then we'll go ahead and put that on to the vote. Been on the table, so to speak.
I reviewed those and I had two issues, but they're not worth. Yeah, they're, they're the same issues that have been over the years.
For years.
Alrighty. New business. Jason Air?
Everybody tonight. Good. Just wanted to do a request on using fleet cards for Appalachian side buses. Basically, we already use the Universal Premium Fleet Cards for fueling buses like the field trips and things of that nature. Appalachian buses currently use Milan Exxon over there on that side. This is just one of those matter of convenience type things we've been doing. Typically, what it boils down to though is the nature of the way we do business with Milan is issue a PO and then our drivers have to go over here, keep up with receipts, sign them, you know, just not a smooth transaction. Especially if they're busy and, you know, drivers are playing things there with the last thirty seconds of their day when they're going, going over there to get you. The other thing they did, they, they up the price a little bit on the fuel because kind of an administrative cost for having to handle the receipts and just kind of the transaction aspects of it. So we want to go to Universal Premium Fleet Cards just to kind of alleviate that, to save us about seventy-five hundred dollars. Didn't put this on here. The other thing that's going to save us on drivers on the clock. So the quicker we can get them fueled, quicker we can get them off the bus, you know, that's just less time they're clocked in. Trying to just speed, you know, speed things up. That's where the convenience and savings kind of, you know, kind of tie in pretty good together. Basically, approximately, as far as financial impact, approximately eighty thousand for the remainder of this fiscal year, hundred and sixty thousand for future years, estimated annual savings of seventy-five hundred, that'll be paid out of the general fund.
So are we already doing this in Winderboro and the rest of the cluster?
No. Well, part of the fleet, fleet fuel is over there at the park. These are, like I said, these are just the ones that have to come the distance to get to us. The other thing we're going to do, we're going to be, excuse me, we're going to use, designate a couple of stations that using that card actually do get a discount. It's kind of like a rewards program kind of thing. We're going to designate some stations for that. We currently, I think we're looking at Kangaroo over there on May Street and the Shell. We're also reaching out to another vendor, another station that's kind of interested us patronizing their business. So we're looking at them. They just have to set their accounts up and stuff. But we're going to try to limit it. That way we've got, we don't have buses all over, you know, all over the county fueling and, and, you know, taking up space. But those locations are very user-friendly as far as the size of the bus and everything goes. Any questions?
No questions for me. Anybody else?
Thank you, sir. Jason, I want to also thank you for the work you and your team did on the Bassa shuttles. Saw that went out today, and they were able to take another look at that. And we won't have to run shuttles, from what I understand, from the high schools anymore starting from break. We'll be able to actually go door to door and pick up all the Bassa kids. So that's going to help, help traffic and help a lot of things that way too. So major kudos to y'all for that.
Good job.
That's just the beginning. I'll litter this agenda one of these days for a bunch of colorful stuff, you know, you know what's going on.
Absolutely.
You should have started with that. You could have gotten a new one.
That was good. I want to keep a horn, too, man. P.O. box, seven six, Paul will forgive Paul's.
Thank you, sir.
So does this mean that we might look to change on the start plan for the best?
Maybe for next year. We're going to run it this year and make sure everything works out. It was all him, all him and his team.
Don Sinclair, virtually.
Thank you. So at the January fifth board meeting, the board voted to award the bid for security camera installation services at multiple schools around this district to low bid respondent Adapt to Solve of Winder, Georgia. Because they were new to us, to the IT services at least, the approval came with the caveat that we would assign them one school to install first, and after that installation, assess the, the quality of the job for satisfactory performance before proceeding to the remaining schools. And if the first job was not satisfactorily done, then the contract would be terminated, and we would return to the board to assign the remaining school installations to another vendor. Adapt to Solve was given Bethlehem to install. And after installation was complete, there were numerous technical issues with the job, as well as a concern with the amount of time that the job was taking. We elected to exercise the termination clause and bring the remaining installations back to the board for selection of another vendor. The original RFP had four responses as shown there. The lowest bid respondent, Source Connect Technologies, was eliminated from the first response consideration due to numerous concerns with their bids. For instance, they required a forty percent deposit upfront. The next lowest bid respondent on the list is Tech Optics of Winder, Georgia. They've done similar business with us before in a satisfactory manner. They met the terms of the RFP, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. Their initial proposal was forty-four thousand five hundred five dollars. Since Bethlehem is currently done, you deduct that amount from their proposal, and the remaining amount of their proposal now is thirty-six thousand seven hundred forty dollars. So that's thirty-six thousand seven hundred forty dollars from splashed IT funds. So the superintendent is recommending, can we go back up to the top? The superintendent recommends awarding the installation of the remaining security cameras in the district to the follow-up low bid respondent Tech Optics in the amount of thirty-six thousand seven hundred forty dollars.
Any questions?
Thank you, John, for keeping such a good eye on that and just making sure that he's done in a timely manner. I know Tech Optics has done a lot of business with us before, so I'm sure they'll do a great job, but it does seem a long track.
Thank you.
Okay. Consent agenda? And now you want to talk to us about Chromebooks?
Yes, and so I have an unfortunate trend in this meeting. At the October sixth board meeting, the board awarded the bid for purchase of HP Chromebooks to low bid respondent AITA Techno, AITA Technologies of North Brunswick, New Jersey. Multiple bids, multiple orders were placed following that, totaling roughly a quarter million dollars, primarily from title and carryover funds that were placed off of that bid response. Due to manufacturing backlog, HP's backlog, AITA has been unable to fulfill these orders, and they're unable to give us a shipping date. We advised AITA that if they were not able to ship by the time of this board meeting, we would be canceling those orders. We advised AITA that if they were not able to ship by the time of this board meeting, we would be canceling those orders. Um, the the major concern, of course, is that those funds um, have to be spent this fiscal year um, before uh. Uh, be- before we lose them and they can't promise us any kind of shipping date whatsoever. So a new RFP was posted. For Dell Chromebooks. Dell is currently shipping Chromebooks in a four to six timeframe, four to six week timeframe, if not sooner. Uh, I spoke to them today and they said if we order today, the Chromebooks would arrive May third. Nineteen vendors responded. Dell was the low bid respondent. Can we, can we scroll down? Uh, they were the little bit respondent. They met the terms of the RFP. They've done similar business with us before and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. And uh, as they are the manufacturer, um, there's no middleman for distribution issues. They've assured us that right now. They have sufficient capacity to ship devices in a timely manner. So we're going to be placing multiple orders. Approximately two-hundred-eighty-five thousand dollars for nine-hundred-eighty-three Chromebooks. From Title One Carryover Funds. Now that is a little more than we spent before, but that's because the cost of the Chromebooks from Dell are a little more expensive. So that's a one-for-one basically replacement of the orders that we're counseling from AITA for HP Chromebooks. We're also asking for approval for nine-hundred-five thousand dollars worth for two-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-one Chromebooks. From Sfloss Technology Refresh Fund Funds. And that's going to replace Chromebooks that are going end of life September twenty-twenty-one. I worried about what that means. Chromebooks have a built-in finite lifespan from uh, Google. Where the hardware will still function, but Google will no longer support the device with operating system updates. They put out operating system updates every few months. And once you get one or two operating system updates out of date. Things like testing no longer work. And so shortly after a device goes end of life. It starts to have limited value in use in an educational curriculum. It'll still surf the web, but it won't run certain applications. It won't do testing. So that's a major deal. Um, so we need to replace those. Uh, and those are going into life September twenty-twenty-one, so we want to buy them soon. Um, and then we're also seeking further approval for an additional hundred thousand dollars in Chromebook purchases. And those aren't particularly specified at this time. Those are just to allow us additional purchases from any sources that come up between now and June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Those will be subject to normal board reporting guidelines. Uh, principal funds and so forth may, may want to buy some. So the financial impact is as shown uh, down there below. Um, thank you. Uh, two-hundred-and-eighty-five, two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand from Title Carryover. Nine-hundred-five thousand from Sfloss Technology Refresh Funds and then a hundred thousand from various sources, should they choose to buy additional Chromebooks.
John, what do we do with those expiring um, Chromebooks? Is there a disposal process that, I mean, are they worth anything?
So this is the first batch of those that are coming up and they certainly are worth something. They they they, you know, they they still function. Um, we might look at uh, either uh, selling them off as as a surplus. We might look at donating them. Um, we haven't come up with a specific plan for that yet. Um, they certainly do not just need to be thrown away. Those are devices that'll have value in some fashion. Whether we sell them or donate them or or find another good purpose for them.
Okay. And I think we're going to vote on this tonight um, to get you going with it.
Uh, if you, if you don't mind, yes, please, that will get us in line uh, sooner than the board meeting in two weeks.
Okay. So we'll um, bring this up at the end of the meeting for approval.
So we're basically replacing and and with a few additions, about four thousand Chromebook for the system. Based on this information.
We're we're replacing approximately twenty-seven-hundred Chromebooks. We're buying an additional, um, whatever the amount was for the Title Careover. Those were new Chromebooks. That the orders just did not arrive.
Okay, so where does this put us in terms of our students, of all of our students having access to Chromebooks?
How far are we from one to one?
Just, I was just about to go there too. Um, I'm not sure exactly how close we would be that young. Probably may have that number, but we are already. I bet we met this morning about having plans of getting to one-to-one um, as we go into the next few years.
So we're looking at an actual budget basis?
Yeah, basically. So we'll be bringing that to you of around that time.
Have we been able, is there a way to, uh, because I mean, we always talk about one-to-one, but obviously not every, not every student in the system. Needs a Chromebook to be awarded at the school. They have their own or their parents apply that. Is there a way that we can calculate the needs of y'all? Is there a way to do that?
Really kind of, uh, there may be a way. It was, we haven't dug that far into it at this point. Um, one of the benefits of going one-to-one. With the same device is that our small but mighty IT can can help support it that way and the same program will run on it. So. Um, so you know, anything that someone wanted to replace and use their own, we'd have to be sure, somebody at the school would have to be sure that that would work. With the same thing. So, um, and then there's always the refresh too. So having, you know, extras and and the way kids move in. I'm sure any of them that are replaced, we'll keep those probably on the shelf until someone comes in two weeks later.
A lot of considerations to work through.
Yeah.
That was going to be my next question is with the growth that he was saying.
So we'll, we'll have to have some, some stock at that.
Yeah, we have to plan for break fix for growth. Um, for having devices at home while also figuring out, do we need to have X number of devices in the school, even though students are taking them back and forth? Um, a lot of considerations we have to hammer out still.
Yeah.
We learned a lot of things during COVID and technology.
As I said, we found a lot of strength. We found some gaps too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Woods?
Good evening. How is everybody this evening? All right, we're going to move right along. Okay, several items. All right. So the first item that I'm presenting to you tonight is for this school year. Sims Academy, uh, we applied for and received a construction related equipment grant. Uh, for the culinary program. Uh, the total uh, amount of that grant was ninety thousand dollars. The equipment needed. Um, for the culinary program would exceed the twenty-five thousand dollar limit. So to comply with board purchasing policies. For the over twenty-five thousand dollars, a bid was submitted through the RFP process. Um, due to the specialization of some of the equipment, several vendors will need to be used because some of the equipment actually has to be made for Sims Academy's uh, kitchen area. Uh, attached in a bid tabulation for the culinary equipment. Um, and RFP was posted and five vendors responded. Uh, the selection uh, for the vendors was made based on the durable, the durability of the product. The timeliness of the delivery. So the total cost uh, for ordering all of the items that are needed uh, will be seventy-four thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-four cents. We are asking for some additional uh, the leeway there, ten percent adjustment to see in case we need to order another of something. Right now you can see there might be one. Um, you know, table mounted can opener. They might decide they need two can openers. Once they get in there and get their, uh, get their equipment installed. Um, and then timeliness of delivery. So, um, these funds will be paid out of the grant totally. So it comes out of the culinary CRE grant. Um, and so we are, the superintendent is recommending accepting the price per line item on the attached bid tabulation sheet. To purchase culinary equipment for Sims Academy. The total cost will be approximately seventy-four thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-four cents. And we are asking for that ten percent adjustment and permission to go to the next bid if timeliness of delivery becomes an issue. Any questions? We're excited about spending seventy-four thousand dollars on new equipment. And it's really to add to because there have been two culinary instructors added Sims. And so that's a good thing that the program is growing and doing so well. Um, and then we were able to uh, make some adjustments in the cafeteria area. So now we're able to sort of expand to sort of almost like two lab classrooms for the kitchen.
Do we need is, can we wait two weeks to vote on this?
Oh, I, you know, that would just warm my heart if you would add that. I didn't ask for that, but if it's possible, I would love that. I don't know if that is possible.
There seems to be a lot of issues with being able to get things in a timely manner.
It's hard to get, it's hard to get anything right.
We could vote on this tonight, right?
Pleasure the board.
We'll see if we can get a motion.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And you have, uh, now you're talking about forklifts.
Yep. So, um, the student, yeah. I hope not. Um, there's really just two items that are sort of the specialty items. Um, and um. Everything else is kind of, you know, like a ninja, you know, can openers, you know, not just commercial grade stuff, but I don't think so. Um, but the, you know. Uh, being able to move tonight will help with that. Um, as some of it, those two big item ovens, the steamer, uh, are specialized. So we do appreciate that. Okay, so the next item is students in our CTA programs from Wyandotte Bear High School, Appalachian and Bassa. Um, will be trained on a forklift operation at Sims Academy. Um. Uh, this simulator and training program will help our students to be more marketable in our region's workforce as well as receive higher wages. The need was identified by our workforce partners, including those serving on the Sims Board of Directors. And RFP was posted with three vendors responding. Respondent forklift simulator of Newport Beach, California met the terms of the RPF with an annual fee of twenty-five hundred dollars. It it has the lowest cost over a five-year period. This respondent also provides hardware that is more consistent with actual forklift. And a comprehensive curriculum that will uh, best prepare our students. The total cost will be uh, thirty-six thousand four hundred and seventy dollars with an annual license fee of twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, and this is being paid out of uh, CTA E Perkins Plus and Perkins Five Grant Funds. And so the superintendent, the superintendent recommends authorizing the award of the sit-down counterbalance forklift simulator. Bid to the respondent forklift simulator of Newport Beach, California in the amount of thirty-six thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
This is amazing that they have a forklift simulator. I learned by running into walls and pallets.
Yes, this is. Yeah, this will be a great opportunity for our students in a variety of programs. So once it's there, um, it it's just going to be accessible to all of the students. In Barrow County and linear tech and foothills. So it's just a great opportunity for us at Sim.
And there's a fucker warehouse up in Jacksontown.
Yep.
Consent agenda? That can wait two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Moving right along. Okay, so I have two textbooks adoptions for you. Um, the Barrack County School System offers advanced placement chemistry to our high school students. And they were uh, in need of an updated text. Uh, the last time the text was brought before the board was prior to two thousand fourteen. So it was time to update our textbook. All the teachers of the courses were uh, involved in the selection process and the consensus was reached. And brought before each school governance team. Um, the price of the textbook is a hundred and sixty-nine dollars for textbook. Um, the financial impact is contingent on student reg- registration. Um, so we don't have a total. This is not coming out of this current year's budget. So it'll be for next school year. So the superintendent recommends the textbook Chemistry AP Edition. Uh, to be placed on the table until the next regularly scheduled meeting for review and consideration for adoption. Uh, if the recommendation is approved, the books will be available at the Professional Development Center. I have a copy for review uh, out there and. One for Miss Tina. So you're going home with two textbooks tonight. Any questions about that?
Okay. Add that.
Okay, moving on. Physics. The Barrack County School System offers AP Physics to our high school students. Um, and they were me in need of an updated text. Um, that was brought before the board, uh, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. So it was time for an update. Again, all the teachers were actively involved in the selection, selection process and consensus was reached and brought to each school government, governance team for endorsement of this recommendation. The price for this textbook is a hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. And again, it's contingent on which students enroll for the AP Physics. And that will come in next year's budget. Um, the superintendent, superintendent recommends the textbook College Physics for the AP Physics One course. To be placed on the table until the next regularly scheduled meeting for review and consideration for adoption. Um, and there will be one placed on um, uh, available for review. Any questions?
Uh, I guess question this will be for both of these books. How many, do you know how many students are currently taking these courses?
Oh, gosh. No, they typically, yeah, no, yeah, I'll get it to you later. Uh, they typically run, you know, like NAP Chem course. Um, and so, you know, thirty, forty-five, give or take, but I can tell you exactly how many enrolled. Yep.
They give us a little idea about how much money.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. We go with this?
Okay, moving right along. All right. So uh, the next item that I have for you guys is Sims Academy Ambassador. Um, will begin utilizing a program called Project Lead the Way. This is a STEM-based program comprising uh, modules specific for middle school and high schools. This is a comprehensive program that includes in-depth professional development for teachers and live classroom support. Sims Ambassador will offer Project Lead the Way Gateway, which is for our middle school students, uh, computer science. Uh, engineering and also the biomedical science. And so the STEM-based curriculum uh, includes professional development. And it has a process of an activity, a project, and then problem-based learning approach. Um, the cost, uh, we've been able to buy a few items, um, for like the actual classroom supplies. Um, but when we looked at adding professional development, we were going to exceed um, our twenty-five thousand dollar threshold for them. So I'm asking and bringing to the board uh, to recommend authorizing the purchase of the items to include the professional development for Sims Academy Ambassador. For their healthcare teachers, engineering, computer science, and their middle school for Project Lead the Way program. It's a sole force provider. Of supplies, resources, and professional development. Uh, we purchased some supplies totaling eighteen thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars. But again, with this addition of the professional development costs of seven thousand two hundred dollars, we'll exceed the twenty-five thousand dollar limit.
Any questions? Concerns, consent agenda? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You need a break.
I miss you guys.
I have uh, first a waiver request for policy I H E. In September of two thousand twenty, State Superintendent Richard Woods released a list of immediate actions and recommendations to reduce the pressure of high-stakes testing. In Georgia classrooms for the school year. One of the three immediate actions from Superintendent Woods. Was to address high-stakes testing, including waiving promotion retention consequences tied to the Georgia Milestones Assessment. More specifically, uh, Superintendent Woods stated that effective immediately. It is the official directive of the Georgia Department of Education that school districts with flexibility contracts, which includes charter systems. And strategic waiver systems. Use the input from teachers, parents, placement committees, class performance, informative tools. To determine the need to promote or retain students for the twenty-twenty, twenty-one school year. Student promotion retention decisions should not be based on a performance aligned to the Georgia Milestones Assessment for this school year. So consistent with the information released by our state superintendent, it is the recommendation of our superintendent. Uh, that we waive policy I H E promotion and retention through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Consent agenda?
Thank you. And the next one is policy I F H renovation requirements for students entering fall two thousand eight, two thousand nine and thereafter. Specifically looking at provision for social studies in state board policy. Uh, the difference between the language and the purpose of this is to bring our local uh, policy in alignment with state board. The difference that you will see is for social sciences, state board policy states that. that, uh, students are to earn one-half credit in American government, government and civics, and one-half unit in economics. However, our local policy states one unit for American government, uh, American government and civics, and one unit for economics. So we would like to bring our local policy in alignment with the state board policy. And this comes about after consideration with and discussion with teachers, assistant principals, and principals. So it is a recommendation of the superintendent, uh, that this be placed on the table for public review and comment until the next regular meeting with subsequent actions and approval for the amendment of the policy to be consistent with state board of education policy 160-4-10 dash point 48.
So I said for those two courses kind of merged together?
Yes, that would be fair.
That opens up more opportunities.
And talking about financial literacy and some other things down the road to set that up.
Can I rest assure that those children who are taking the other course and then to know the difference between a democracy and a representative republic?
I believe based on the recommendation from the teachers and from the administrators, there you can rest assured.
Good. Cause I'm, I'm having a little issue with some things I'm hearing from kids about thinking they live in a democracy.
I have confidence in the teachers', um, view of the instructional calendar and their ability to teach the content and the flexibility that this would allow our high school principals with some scheduling decisions.
Yeah. And another issue it'll help solve is we have a, being the way we are and then the number of friend, uh, transferee, transfers in that come in, we're always having to kind of shuffle that around anyway with hardship waivers and et cetera, et cetera, because they just don't line up with anybody when they transition in.
Anything else?
Ricky? Don't think I, I see what could go wrong with this. Some people think we might be lowering our standards. But we're going from, we'll require a full view. We're going to have.
Again, we are not lowering our standards. We are still covering, uh, the content. And like I said, I have confidence in the teacher's ability to teach the standards and to cover the content in that amount of time.
I understand. I, I believe that.
Yes.
Is there somewhere going to look at this like we are? Well, I said that's, it'd be a misconception on the board.
Right.
You understand what I'm saying?
I do. I do understand what you're saying. That's a very important point. And, uh, we are prepared to respond to those questions.
And this will be.
Yes, it will be consistent with state board.
I understand. I understand.
And I understand what you're saying about.
There's nothing wrong with us being the public.
Yeah. I understand about the public perception and we are ready and prepared to respond.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll see what kind of feedback we get too. And, um, and remember we're on a block schedule, so our.
A lot of times.
Longer. And that's, that, this was, that policy was enacted before we went to block.
But sometimes the public doesn't, they don't really hear what you said.
Absolutely.
A lot, I know with our growth thing, with a lot of people moving in, that is one, uh, I would say complaint, but that's one thing I've heard is that sometimes our schedules and our requirements don't line up, particularly with Gwinnett County. So that the kids move here, they're kind of out of whack a little bit, you know, because they take this in tenth grade over there and this in ninth grade over there. So I think more than anything, just as we grow, it'll kind of ease a little bit of that. You know what I mean?
And honestly, Ms. Brady, I, I had the same question when they brought it to me. And so I was helpful with, with what we had, but.
Well, and I think the other thing here is that Gwinnett, if I'm not mistaken, it's not the charter school system.
No.
And then we are, and then what was brought up in our thing, um, Friday in the breakout session is that what people that come to, from Gwinnett, that calling Gwinnett and kind of Barrow that they like is that they can, like teachers, is that they can go behind and close the door and teach to their students what their students' needs are versus having to have a set and be like a robot and teach exactly. And every teacher at 80A or 805 or 812 is exactly on the same thing. Our students are not robots. They're different needs and we can meet those needs based on what they are with the charter school system. And that's why Barrow chose to go to the charter school system because we can do best of what our students' needs are. So when you move to Barrow, you've got to take that into consideration. It's that we're meeting our students' needs based on what they are. And so what Auburn Elementary students are, and that's why we have school governance teams to decide where that money goes because they know best hands-on even more, you know, they tell, once that money goes out to the schools, they have the school governance teams that say, here's what Auburn's needs are. Bramlett may have totally different needs than Auburn does. So I think that's unique.
We'll add this to consent agenda. We, we go with it? Thank you, Dr. Moulton. Earl?
Our two-story additions at Bramlett, Kennedy, and Yargo turn 20 years old, uh, next summer. And, uh, so they're eligible for state capital outlay dollars. Uh, we need to refresh, um, those, those buildings, paint, ceilings, lights, floors, uh, similar to what we've been doing elsewhere each summer. Um, and so the first step in that process is to, uh, assign an architect to the project. And so what we've, what we've done is looked at that same, uh, group that we looked at several years ago, um, Smallwood, Reynolds, Stewart, and Stewart, um, submitted a proposal at that time, several years ago. They've been ranked as one of the highest, uh, firms. And we set the fee 5%. Um, and, uh, if we do get reimbursed from the state for those, uh, design costs. Uh, so like I said, this is the first step. I'll come back to you in the summer, ask you to, uh, approve an application to the state and we'll look for a construction manager and GMP and all those sorts of things. But, um, the superintendent recommends approval of Smallwood, Reynolds, Stewart, Stewart Associates for Architectural Services, uh, to renovate the additions at Bramlett, Kennedy, and Yargo. We also plan to do some additional work in the existing buildings there if we can make that happen. Um, these folks have done a fine job for us. They're doing the Westside Edition right now. They did these additions. They designed them originally 20 years ago. So I'm very pleased with them.
Okay. Questions?
Uh, they got off to a little bit of a rocky start, but, uh, they're doing much better.
Consent agenda? Okay.
Okay. Our next item is, um, recommendation for a guaranteed maximum price to make improvements at transportation. Um, it's been, I think since 2008 or 2009, since we last were at, uh, transportation to make any real meaningful capital improvement type, uh, work happen over there. So it's time. Um, and, uh, Kendall and our architect who was assigned back in, uh, November and our construction manager came on board in December, uh, they've met a number of times, walked that facility and talked about their needs. And, uh, so, um, we're in a position now, uh, to make a recommendation for a guaranteed maximum price of $1 million for this project. Uh, this will be SLOs funded. And this is really going to take existing space that they have, uh, that, that could be put to better use than, than its current state, uh, to create admin areas, uh, additional shop space, uh, restroom, uh, storage spaces and things of that nature. So, um, this, this will really help them sort of take the next step as we grow, uh, to accommodate their staff and their needs, transportation.
Okay. Consent agenda? Thank you, sir.
Right. So, um, as you know, we are renovating, uh, Appalachia High School, Holson Beck, and Auburn Elementary School. We came to you last month for classroom furniture. So this month we are coming to you to, um, get cafeteria tables. So the superintendent recommends accepting the green highlighted price per line item on the attached bid tabulation sheet to refresh cafeteria tables at Holson Beck, uh, Auburn and Appalachia High School during the renovations over the summer. Total cost will be approximately $156,286. And as we are doing most recently, we are asking for a contingency of 10% for adjustments in the quantity and permission to go to the next lowest bid if timeliness of delivery becomes an issue. Five vendors responded and, um, the selection was made on each line item, best price using the best price, most durable product, uniformity of products, and ability to produce samples, um, and Georgia references and timeliness of delivery. And this will be paid out of ELOs or SLOs funds.
And same question, is this something we need to go ahead and vote on tonight?
It, it, it would be wonderful if you could, um, as you all know, there's been a lot of grant money, um, filtered down to the, the, uh, districts. And so, uh, people are just buying like crazy. Um, so there is back orders on everything right now. So it would be great if you could.
Why not be able to sit at a table when we get these schools all renovated?
You know, it's strange how events change the way we think of the board. I mean, you know, and I think this board is adjustable, if I use that term correctly. And that I, I can remember sitting on board and laying too, that, you know, we had, we had a waiver week to do stuff like this. I just want to commend the, the board to be willing to say, maybe go ahead and leave.
I agree. Okay. We'll vote tonight if we can get a motion.
Um, all right. So this is, uh, the, the next one is the $1,000 bonus. Um, so the super, superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve a retention bonus to all employees and contract custodians. The net cost to be offset by the Georgia DOE and Bright From The Start contribution, estimated cost from the care, estimated cost will come from the CARES Act funds for $275,000. So the background on this is on January 14th, Governor Kemp announced a $1,000 retention bonus for all school level staff in Georgia K through 12 public schools, including teachers, parent professionals, counselors, psychologists, nurses, custodians, bus drivers, school nutrition staff, media specialists, clerical staff, administrative assistants, school principals, assistant principals, instructional coaches, therapists, et cetera. Um, part-time employees like our bus drivers, they'll get a full $1,000, um, uh, bonus rather than having, they're, they're mostly 64%, but they really work 100%. Um, but they're 64% base pay. So they, we were scared that they were only going to get 640, but they're going to get a full thousand. So that's great for our school through nutrition staff and our, 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 um, bus drivers. Uh, Bright From The Start will be covering our pre-K teachers and parent professionals. On March 24th, Governor Kemp and the Georgia DOE extended this to cover maintenance mechanic, maintenance, um, mechanics and most of the PDC staff. So the total reimbursement from the Georgia DOE will be $1,838,233.44. So in addition to this, the superintendent is requesting that the bonus extends to all of our employees, which are not covered under, under the Georgia DOE retention bonus plan, and also to extend to all of us, all of our contract custodians. So it does cover custodians, but it doesn't cover contract custodians just once the, the district's hired. So we want to cover our contract custodians. This is the criteria that we want to use. Employees and contract custodians will be eligible for the bonus if they have been employed by the school system or contracted with Primero 90 calendar days as of the day that the Georgia DOE will announce the release of these funds to the school district. They must also be an active employee or custodial contractor on the day of the check. So we're planning on this going into the paycheck on April 30th. So they will have to be an active employee on April 30th. Plus, uh, we believe the funds should drop any day now. So we're going to look back 90 days and make sure that they, they're just not, they just haven't been with us for a month, um, to make sure that this is a retention bonus. Um, so if they haven't been with us the whole, full 90 days, we will adjust it and we will help hold their check until they. Special rules will apply to those on SMLA or workers comp. The Georgia DOE will reimburse Medicare portion of FICA, but not the Social Security portion because not all districts are covered by Social Security. So this is an anticipated cost of $113,000. Due to the special tax rules, bonus checks will be included in the employee's monthly payroll check. So we wanted to give this as a separate check, but, uh, the IRS would have, uh, taxed that at 22% and then you've had the state 6% and then FICA 7.65. So people would be bringing home about $650. Um, but it is not earnable compensation under TRS. So we don't have that expense, which is, which is great. So we are hoping and by all means we can do it, um, be in their April 2021 paycheck.
It's too bad we couldn't do it as a separate check. It's a lot more meaningful.
So much more meaningful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Been rounding around the horn on that one, but they'll actually.
Yeah.
They add more.
Yeah.
This route, um, those with the lower tax rates, it's better.
So all our employees will be covered somewhere.
Yeah. Yes.
How will it be, to your point about it not being a separate check? How will it be?
Um, well, our employees really know about it.
Yeah, let me show you my emails.
But, um, after you all, after you guys approve it, then of course we are just going to blast them all out, let them know that it will be in their April check. It will be a, a separate line item on their check, um, even though that's not, you're not really supposed to do that, um, in order to avoid the 22% tax, but we're going to go ahead and do that anyway. And, uh, we will just celebrate it and let them know how much we appreciate them. And any other ideas that anybody else has, we will incorporate it, but they are looking forward to this for sure.
Yeah. I, you know, and the custodians getting in is huge. I mean, cause that's just a tough job. It's been a tough year.
And the retention piece, though, those, those folks are working hard. And, and, you know, I mean, there are other things they can do. And especially during the time of infectious disease, if the ones, if the ones who are stuck with us are really need to, to be rewarded for that.
Yeah.
Since we're loading on everything early, can we just add this in so they can get a pre-spring rate?
I think.
We can't get it to them. We can vote on it. We can give that the news.
Surprise. Or not surprise.
I think. I think we have enough time though, right?
We do. We do. We don't have to. Um, the approximate cost of this is going to be $2,140,000. Georgia DOE reimbursement is going to be $1,838,000. Approximate Bright From The Start reimbursement will be $37,000. So the net approximate cost will be $275,000 and we will pay for this out of our CARES Act funds.
Okay. Anything else? Oh, you have.
I have one more.
Okay. That's going on consent agenda then everybody.
All right. We are very excited to bring to you our summer remediation. Um, superintendent recommends using up to $400,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds to provide summer school to our students. Each school will have sufficient funds to identify and serve students impacted by COVID-19 learning loss through the implementation of evidence-based intervention and ensure that those interventions respond to students' social, emotional, and academic needs. Schools will create two to four-week summer programs focusing on reading, math, and any other areas deemed necessary. Transportation will be offered and invitations will be going out in the upcoming days. Uh, and again, it will be up to $400,000 in American Rescue Plan funds.
Okay. My question about this is, because I know we've been looking at this ever since COVID started. And we realized that a lot of our students are going to need remediation. Is this two to four week period going to be enough to do what we need to do with all of our students?
Um, no, just to be, but it's a, but it's a good start. But it's a good start. I mean, we're, we're not going to solve everything that has, um, affected these, uh, students in two to four weeks, no matter what we did. Um, it's, but it's a good start. It's a good beginning to get them, you know, of course identified and, and start working on that, those basic pieces. But no, it'll be, it'll be a year or two, um, before we get them told that. Those type of gaps, depending on the grade levels and depending on, you know, um, um, how far behind each student is, that type of thing. Um, you know, those with support at home will, will come up quickly. Those without, as always, will, will stay behind and, and take a little longer. So, uh, this will be a multi-year task to get them, um, just, just to be completely honest and blunt about it. But, uh, this is a, a two to four. Honest and blunt about it, but uh this is a a two to four week. Refresher to to pull in the things that we know they they have missed is a great start and I think we're pretty blessed to have the money to be able to do it. Um uh that way, but but no, there'll be there will there will be more that we'll we have to layer on top of that. Probably the next couple of years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Exemplary committee assessment review.
Okay, um you all did the uh. Whole group review and every year is part of the uh. Our application process for the exemplary board award that you all have. Brought home five years in a row. Um there's also a exemplary committee which uh. Brings in other folks. Um. Let's see, I think Jordan and Ms. Stevens were part of that, Dr. Moten. Um and a couple of people out of the community. Dr. Petrie and Julia Simpson. So um basically that's there for you to review and basically vote to accept. Um next year, so we can have that or at the next meeting, so that we'll have that in the minutes and it'll be. Um then we can turn in uh the exemplary committee exemplary board packet uh in the next next month or so for this past year. And I think you. Probably every school board should get it after this this past year of COVID, but um. Just by default, but um but you all have done the work and you continue to finish up the work if we get through the rest of this. This school year into the summer, but that's one piece.
Um so we'll add that to the contingent. That'd be great. Terms of committees, um has everybody picked up their packet for the teacher of the year? Vince, have you picked up your stuff? Okay, and we're good. Um. No other committees, you know, I I don't know what everybody thinks, but maybe before the end of the year, we could get out and um just tour schools, just, you know, and um. Not necessarily for a clean school, but just.
We could.
Commend people for what they've done.
Folks to see you. See us out there.
Yeah, so maybe we could get.
We'll go here with Joe and Morgan, we'll we'll work something out after spring break.
Yeah, we think that's a good idea.
And they'll they'll use gift over um.
Yeah, the minutes.
No, 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 the uh. Matt Thompson on the. On the.
Yeah, I I asked them.
But I had a question.
Okay.
When I was saying about.
You had a question?
You're the day.
She has a question about the uh the year report. Enroll my reporter.
The ones where it shows what it was that I guess now. Compared to last year this time, fourteen thousand two eighty to two thousand two fifty three. The next one, file up the next one up. Not that one. Go down to you have the next one down, that one. Right there, fourteen thousand uh two. What's the two eighty? It said two fifty. Two one two fourteen two fifty six, fourteen two fifty three. Um. Well, actually, the one above was looking at two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one. Is that from? Like, we know those numbers, it's not that big of a difference. Um does that count? Do we know how many of those are new or have been counted for? How many of those are counted for for the ones that we don't know where they went? You know, after COVID hit.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was. This.
I'm sorry.
The dip, yeah.
We know that's not that big of a number, but the one from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, fourteen thousand two eighty to fourteen thousand two. I think it says fifty six, fifty, I think it's exactly what the number was, fifty three.
It's gonna be a base year, but we began to see students that we didn't have last year. We had probably gotten some of the students that. Went away for one reason or another, their homes people were um. Oh, Matt put it back and I'd be happy to try to. That together, you know, like to see a little breakdown about that.
Yeah, just sitting up, we know because something was mentioned.
It changes. Part of the problem is the moving target is constantly changing. We have a lot of day-to-day turnover, so. You don't choose to do a snapshot view of it, whatever I put together to be changed two days later. I certainly think we've been doing some work on students that we lost track of previous year. I'd be happy to. Share that with.
I just didn't know how since wanting that big of a difference.
No, it's caught up a little bit where it was, um which is good, um because most districts in the state were down about four percent. Um from the previous year or in October, we were only down about two percent. But we managed to make most of that back up, but it's not necessarily the case of precisely the same students coming back.
That's what I was wondering.
It's going to be a pull in. You can get some up and back. Some of them are just new students, Barrow, some of them. Left and have gone somewhere else.
That's what I was wondering, you know, we had an idea of how many were new students versus how many or some of those may have come back, but we don't know.
I I will pull that to you if you have any other thoughts on that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Pearl.
One question that it's. If I look at those numbers and it looked like we we were down in most of our students. And I know that as far as the high schools are concerned. It's middle schools too. Part of that is the vast of.
Yes.
But it, so we ended up with a with a net increase. But I looked at all those negative numbers and I'm thinking, how did this work out? So I think it would be really helpful if we could get an idea of how many students that left have come back. And how many of these are new to the area? I'm looking at all this growth. It's just especially in Auburn, it's just nuts. So um I'm thinking these numbers are gonna. Increase dramatically in the next six months.
Yeah. Also, I also think we had um some kid kindergarten. Students that weren't, you know, that kid that their parents kept them home that could have sent them, so I think we're going to see a.
You also have a large group of students in like grades that are now in about grades eight through twelve, seven through twelve that were just. Statistically, it's a large cohort as a birth rate, the economy, things like that. And so they're starting to age through. They're now at the high school level, high middle. So we had had declining enrollment at early elementary for several years and that group is now. Um you know, easing up into upper elementary, lower middle. And then COVID knocked down kindergarten and first grade numbers pretty severely, so. That's part of the reason why you see elementary with so many that lost enrollment at middle high. Either up a little bit or stabilizing overall because it's a combination of. People are more likely to keep home, young kids, keep them out a year, homeschooling, um do whatever. And then also we just have a large cohort that is statistically larger than the rest of the grade that are moving through. Aging out of Barrow that be at the high school, probably graduating.
Yeah, that bubble's just moving up.
Away.
Yep. Okay, anything else?
Uh are we gonna, at what point do we need to put together a committee to uh redo the superintendent's evaluation?
We've talked about that. Um. Yeah, Dr. Michael and I, I think he's going to provide me with some data and then my plan is to get some people together.
Okay.
He he's got a deliverable. All right, that said, we're going to move into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring. Disciplinary action or dismissal or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee. Or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. Uh that said?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.